I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
Mrs. Thomas, remaining board members, we have no adjustments to the agenda this evening.
Item D, approval of minutes for the January 14th, 2020 meeting.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes, January 14th, 2020, board meeting as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all votes in favor? Thank you, five oh. Item E, communications and correspondence.
I have one letter of retirement that I believe is already circulated with the members, which I will address in my report.
Item F, public participation. Item G, administrative board reports. Mrs. Wright.
So, I'm going to share with you Mr. Clifford, I believe it's probably already shared with you, as well as a couple other items. Very exciting that our special education teacher, Kayla Riordan, has been nominated for the 2020 Hancock County Teacher of the Year Award. Kayla is a life skills teacher and continues to do great work getting her students into the community to set them up for jobs after they graduate. She has also played a key role in the development of our Unified Basketball Program. We did our January Students of the Month, and our EHS Student of the Month was Caitlin McPherson. Our VPA Student of the Month was Alec Leathers, and our Rachel's Challenge Student was Relic Concepcion, who is probably the first non-senior to be, but we, anybody, doesn't have to be a senior for that one, so. Also, we've had a lot of exciting things go on. We have 2,000 point scorers, scoring 1,000 points in a high school career is very difficult, does not happen very often. A few weeks ago, EHS had two players score 1,000 points, just days apart. Jackson was the first to do it in a game against Prescott High School, and Trinity Montigny scored her 1,000th point a few days later in a game against Foxcroft Academy. The games were well attended, there were plenty of signs, and it was overall two terrific nights for these two we'll always remember forever. And also interesting to me is their parents, their mothers were both good friends in high school and graduated the same year, so it's just kind of ironic that that all came together.
Yes, true.
It's playoff time, which is why I'm here instead of Mr. Clifford this evening. His little freshman girl is playing in that playoff game for the first time ever, so. Good luck to all our student athletes as they participate in playoff action over the next few weeks. All have had successful seasons and have qualified for postseason play. And a couple things I just want to add are, we have ASVAB testing for all our sophomores tomorrow is happening. Our Friends of Rachel Club is doing Random Acts of Kindness this week, and we have these cut-out hearts and have challenged everybody in the school to do Random Acts of Kindness, write it on the heart, put it in the box, and then we're posting them all on a big board there, which is kind of fun. Also, the VPA Department has been invited by the Department of Education to display 42 pieces of artwork at their central offices in Augusta. It will include an opening ceremony that acknowledges our students and, which also includes a performance, I'm not sure what the performance is going to be yet. This will be in early June, and they're working with Jason Anderson, our Department of Education's VPA Specialist and EHS alumni, to arrange this, so we're very excited about that. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gabbiannelli?
Good evening, it's nice to see you all. On February 14th, we are going to be holding our annual winter carnival with students, and we are excited, student ambassadors got together and came up with some new activities, and we're going to be participating in some STEAM activities, some snow sculpting, which it sounds like we're going to get a whole bunch of that on Thursday. And we're going to do some rock wall climbing and a lot of activities, so kids are really looking forward to it, they've worked really hard to plan it, and it should be a really exciting day. Eighth grade high school registration is coming up already. We are holding appointments on March 2nd, 3rd, and 6th, so if you are an eighth grade parent, please call the front office and register, or set up an appointment to register your eighth grader for high school. And we have really something exciting going on in the middle school for the first time. We have started a Skills USA team with the help of Ms. Amy Bowles and her staff. Laura Johns has graciously volunteered to be the advisor, so we have about 15 students who are currently working on their Skills USA projects. They met for the first time this afternoon, and they're super excited and rocking and rolling with that, so thank you to Mrs. Bowles and her staff for helping us get up and running. I think it's going to be really exciting to see our kids compete on March 20th. On Saturday, our boys' basketball played in the league championship and actually won, it's very exciting. This is the second year in a row that they won the championship, so we got to keep the trophy with us, we didn't have to give it back. On January 25th, eight of our students participated in the Math Counts competition, and two of our students, Casey McDonald and Kevin Ford, qualified for states, so that's very exciting. On February 28th, our show choir is going to compete in the District 6 Regional Competition, that's being hosted at Ellsworth High School. And our cheering team finished with a first-place finish at the Bucksport Competition and second-place at Doughty, so it's really exciting stuff that's happening. Also, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there's an art show going on at the Ellsworth Public Library that's featuring 70, about 70 pieces of work from EEMS, so the kids' artwork is on display at the Ellsworth Public Library. We met as a PTF this afternoon, as always, on the second Tuesday of every month, we meet at 3:00 in the EMS Library, and they're hosting their annual Harry Potter Night on March 20th, so if anybody would like to volunteer and help us out, Harry Potter is on. Any questions? Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you.
Ms. Lewis.
Yeah, I'm a month older. And today, the kindergarten kids put on a wonderful Hundreds Day Parade because we're celebrating the week that has a Hundred Day in it. So they dress in costumes where they look older, they have little mustaches and top hats, and one little guy had a cane made out of one of those paper, you know, like your holiday paper rolls. But the thing that really amused me was when the fourth group of kindergarteners went by, and they said, "Mrs. Lewis, are you going to walk in the parade?" And I said, "I didn't wear my costume today." He goes, "Oh." Great! But I'm only a month older than I was last month, so I don't really qualify yet for the Hundreds Day Parade, but it was absolutely wonderful. And the kids looked so sweet, and some of them look a little older than five and six, so, you know, it's amazing to watch them grow. It's just fantastic, and that's really the joy of our school system, is that's what we're all about, is kids growing and learning. A little later on tonight, we'll talk about how we even expand those age groups, and so now we go from pre-K to a hundred, so you know, whatever. One correction I would like to make in the principal's report, I'm not sure had I dozed off, but it needs to say that the Bikes for Books came, are work with the Masons, and I want to make sure that they get credit for that because it's an amazing organization, it's an amazing program. When students read over vacations, as you know, they track the number of books, and then a young lady and a young gentleman from each grade level gets their name drawn for a bicycle, and the Masons do that for us. And Jessie Thomas puts them together, and I know Brenda helps, so. Jessie says she didn't, so I'm pretty sure she does. I wanted to make that correction, I don't know exactly what I was doing there. The other thing that I wanted to note is that I gave you a copy of, we have not done our assemblies yet this week, we're hoping, we were hoping to have them Thursdays, but Thursday or Friday, we'll be having assemblies, and in, we're going to do assemblies this year by, at this point in time, by grade levels, so it's a little more intimate, a little more personal, and the intent of those assemblies is not only to award monthly attendance, so that they can all get perfect attendance, but also for them to present poetry, or artwork, or writing that they have done in a small group of their peers. Periodically, we'll continue to have our K-4 assemblies, and that works out fine, but I really wanted something a little more intimate towards the end of the year. And I have a whole lot of things that were bequeathed to me in my closet for perfect attendance, I thought, yeah, this is how I get those numbers up, and encourage people to notice. So the kids are going to get a certificate, but that isn't what I gave you tonight. The certificate says, "Congratulations, you were here every day, you weren't tardy, you were here, ready to grow and learn." But I think the piece of this that I really wanted to focus on is that parents are basically responsible for their kids getting there. And as you'll note in the letter that we're going to send out, it's the same design around the border as the certificates for the kids, but this is a certificate to parents saying, "Thank you, you get them here." We don't want them to come sick because we don't want everybody to get sick, but we don't want them to come late because they miss the most important part of the instructions during the day, and that whole morning meeting, which everybody K-4 does, where they actually get to acknowledge each other, and every kid gets to feel valued. We don't want them coming in late and missing that, it's an extremely important part of the day, but I wanted a way to say to parents, "Thank you for doing that." Now, at the suggestion of my incredible staff, who thinks up things that are just amazing, we are also going to follow a general letter for parents with the exact same border that says, during our assemblies, children were awarded, you know, certificates for perfect attendance, they got there on time, and they didn't miss any days, and they happened not to be sick, and we are hoping that all of you will understand that we know you're going to keep your kids home when they're sick, and, but we wanted to let you know, this is really, really important. When you value education, your children pick up on that, and they try to do their best when they get there. So what you have in front of you is what we're sending home with the hundreds, you know, the perfect attendance certificates, and what we will follow that with is a general letter to everybody saying, "Please help us, we want to give your children every bit of the talent and skills that our staff has for imparting knowledge and behaviors," so. Anyway, so that's about it. The only other thing I want to mention is the kindergarten registration will be earlier this year. We're trying to get a whole lot of things wrapped up before the end of the year, class placement, and passing on what the needs and challenges and strengths of every child are to the next classroom teacher. So I want our class list done a little earlier than they sometimes are, which is usually the last day of school when the report cards are going home. So, and the other part of that is that we're looking to do more transition projects from all of the sending and feeder organizations, and so a little later on tonight, we'll talk about Head Start and how we're planning to do that. So, that's about it. Thank you. And I'll just go back to my seat.
Mrs. Bowles.
We'll change the order someday. Good evening, you have a copy of my report. We have done another round of sixth grade visits since our last monthly report, and we now have had 342 sixth graders come through HCTC. With another batch left to do, we're hoping to get them in over, after vacation, the Blue Hills Schools, so the Peninsula Schools, and DeRyle Elementary. So we've sent an invite to host them in late February, and we're hoping they'll take advantage of it. We also are busy utilizing our middle school grant money to host our first-ever eighth-grade career fair, which will be held at Ellsworth Middle School, thanks to the generosity of Ms. Gabbiannelli. We had our first meeting with Gretchen Wilson, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber has agreed to fully partner with us in this. We are meeting again at the end of this week, and really strategizing and prioritizing businesses across Hancock County, because we will be inviting all of eighth graders from around the county to come visit us. And our plan is organize businesses by career cluster, and have students participate in a scavenger hunt, so they have to go through and communicate with the businesses, and we're in process of developing some pre-leçons that teachers can do with the eighth graders to help teach them how to interact with business people, what kinds of questions to ask, and some of the soft skills that we'd like to see them do. So we're really excited about that coming together. Our first Rotary Club Student of the Month banquet was canceled because of weather, so tonight I have listed for you our first and second round of Rotary Club Student of the Months. We're very fortunate that the Rotary Club every month honors one of our students from each of our programs. In September, we honored Ellsworth High School student Samantha Simmons for law enforcement. In October, we honored automotive homeschool student Samantha Moore. In November, Ellsworth High School's Taylor Richardson for our biomedical program. In December, health occupations was Michaela Fishburne, also from Ellsworth High School. January, multimedia Ben Snow from Ellsworth, and in February, from welding, Mount Desert Island High School student Jessie Felix. On March 4th, Bobby Deitchen, you may remember him, he used to work in the Ellsworth School Department, he's now the Assistant Director at Midcoast School of Technology in Rockland. He and I were approached by Melmat to be presenters at the next Melmat Conference, and we were asked to present what will be called gaining a competitive edge, and to talk to people about actual students who have gone through CTE, combined their CTE program with rigorous courses at their high schools, whether they be honors classes, bridge, dual enrollment, or AP courses, and what kinds of things those students are doing now as a result of combining the two things together. So we'll be working on putting that presentation together and offering that at the next statewide Melmat Conference in Augusta on March 4th. We're also excited, and I'll present to you in a little bit, our overnight trip for skills, as Ms. Gabbiannelli mentioned, it's that time of year for us. We're excited about our collaboration with the middle school in addition to the 69 high school students that we'll be taking to compete on March 20th. We had, ooh, there was four of us from HCTC, met with middle school kids today from 2:30 to 4:00 to start coaching the middle school kids, and they're very nervous, and very acute, and excited, so we'll be bringing, like Erica said, 12 to 15 middle schoolers, and then our 69 high schoolers on that day, to compete at the state competition. Finally, I've been on the road for the last week and a half, every day pretty much, it is admissions season for HCTC. I have almost completed all of our high school first-round visits, where I do general presentations to all ninth, 10th, and 11th graders about programming for next year. Our application this year is online instead of a thick packet, and the link is live, which I included in my report. It is now live on Facebook, the website, and guidance counselors have emailed them out to all students. We've already received 20 applications, some seven or eight kids per high school, it seems. As soon as I leave, I think they sit and do it, which is a good thing, but I'm starting the second round visits now, which is offering a new layer this year for info sessions. So I start info sessions tomorrow right and early at Bucksport High School, and this is to hopefully help students make better decisions about, is this the correct pathway for them, and further educate them on more details of a program. You know, we decided that the initial presentation is always very overwhelming, it's an hour, and it's a lot of information about all the programs, and their minds leave, they're excited, but they're also spinning, and we want to help kids make good choices, so I'm going back a second time to every high school to offer individual program info sessions, where kids can come in a smaller setting and ask questions. So the applications are due Friday, March 13th, the application portal is open, so any Hancock High School student that is in ninth, 10th, or 11th grade can apply. We also have this year for the first time, the Bridge Academy application is also online, so students and families can do both right on their computer. The HCTC application can be down on their phone if they even want, and I want to advertise that our Bridge Parent Night is Tuesday, February 25th, at the Ellsworth High School Auditorium at 7:00. We have representatives from Bridge, University of Maine, and my school will be there as long as, along with Mr. Clifford, and we'll be meeting with freshmen and sophomore parents that are interested in learning more about the program, and giving kids some information about that as well. Any questions? Yes, it is Tuesday, February 25th, at EHS Auditorium at 7:00. You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coleman Ramos?
Good evening. We just met with our CIA team yesterday. Our Curriculum Instruction Assessment Team is exploring a program called CSA and Google Classroom as well, for their capacity to create digital portfolios. And those portfolios are where exemplar work from our students can travel with the student, so that teachers can be informed about their student's ability and their educational needs. CSA is a classroom app that was introduced, I've talked about it before, by the Momentum pilot that we did through the state, and it engages students in their learning. It uses built-in annotation tools to capture what they know in CSA's digital portfolio. You may remember when we had our students' visit, and they read and they recorded some of their reading, they were using the CSA app, where they're really easily able to, you know, click on a microphone and take a video of themselves reading, or they can take a picture of the book and talk about the reading. One of our teachers at the meeting said that she has them take a picture of the book, if they don't want to be on camera, and then tells about the book, tells what page they ended on, and what they learned that day and the parts that they read, and she said it helps them be accountable for their reading, and when they know that they're going to be recording it and send it, then they send it to her, they know that they really have to be paying attention when they're reading, and they don't just go, "I'm done." So it's really, she's finding that there's a lot more comprehension, that they're really paying better attention, because they're excited about the technology piece, so it's been very engaging for kids in the lower grades, but we're also looking at it as a possible K-12 opportunity. Google Classroom is a free web service developed by Google for Schools that aims to simplify creating, distributing, and grading paperless assignments. So CSA is currently being used by several teachers at EEMS, and Google Classroom is being used by several teachers at the high school, as well as a few at EEMS. So each of the members of our team, we're taking this on as our, as our project this year, are learning more about both of those products from the perspective of what their needs are in their respective teaching positions. So we have special ed representatives thinking about uses and applications. Our ELL teacher and ed tech are part of the team this year, so we have people who specialize in social studies, in science, and they're all looking at it from different perspectives to see how those products might help us get packages of progressive work as kids move through the Ellsworth school system, so that each teacher could look at a few items that they'd worked on over the past and get a sense of where they are in each of the content areas. It's an exciting proposition, and at our meeting yesterday, we discussed those different attributes of the program that could be advantageous to personalizing instruction for students. They're being very creative in their thinking, so some people are thinking we could use CSA in the lower grades, where there's a lot of activities that are geared towards lower grades, and maybe have a pass-off from eighth grade to ninth grade, have our freshman teachers, who tend to start using Google Classroom, be able to download some of that material and transfer it to Google Sites, where each kid would have kind of their own web link of being able to collect portfolio materials throughout their career, and then be able to take that with them to college. So there's lots of different ideas going around, and it's really, it's exciting for me to hear everybody kind of brainstorming about the best way for us to be able to have kids kind of chronicle their, their learning experience in the, in the district, so it's exciting. We had phonics training, Jane Jones from Heinemann came to us from Georgia to provide two days of consultant work with our kindergarten through third grade teachers. She spent the first day with each grade level answering questions about our new phonics and word study program, that teachers are in the first year of fully implementing, and her second day was spent modeling lessons with the students, so that teachers could observe her practice and discuss ideas with her afterwards. And it was really exciting, she's a veteran teacher, has worked in all grades, really personable, obviously loves kids of all ages, and is very, was very effective with all of them, and so we even had, you know, veteran teachers going, "Oh, I hadn't thought of that, that's great," because they were able to take the time, we were able to line up substitutes. I do want to thank Sherri Cox, who went above and beyond finding substitutes to help those teachers have a little bit of time to watch her do a lesson, and to debrief with her, and talk about new ways to use that program. Sherri does so much work to make those things happen, and I do want to thank her for that. She was a veteran teacher and facilitator, and was extremely knowledgeable. She also worked with one team to help them develop lesson plans for all of next year. She gave them kind of a model of how she's developed those lesson plans, and they did some great collaborative work. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
It's my turn.
It's your turn.
Well, I heard Mrs. Lewis reference a couple of things. One is she made a veiled reference to the weather forecast for Thursday, so that means I don't have to do a storm day update, but you'll be responsible if we have a storm day, Kathy. But the other thing, Kathy, when we're talking about standards, you mentioned recruiting for kindergarten and sign-up, and Mr. Clifford and Mrs. Bowles are well aware of this, they've had quotas for the past several years. One of the things for you is a quota, and that would help determine whether or not you're able to go on into retirement next year. Absolutely, Mrs. Lewis. For the members of the board and the community, just to remind you that the second session of the legislature is in full swing. I forwarded to you in your packets today a list of 21 bills that the legislature's Joint Education and Cultural Affairs Committee is going to be considering over the next several weeks. We won't discuss them tonight, but I wanted you to have them and a brief description of them with you, because in a short session, we're adjourned, and is the third Wednesday of April, things move very quickly in the legislature, and we need to be on top of it. There are bills in there that deal with labor laws, minimum wage rates for support staff, and I think we mentioned that around the table. You'll see in there, there's a definition of what a support staff member is for that bill. Certification, funding, and transportation and bus drivers, and I can just tell you about one of those bills, Mr. Saunders contacted me as soon as he saw the bill titled and said, "Electric buses, are we going to have to move to electric buses in the next couple of years?" I noticed that the bill title is, "We have to entice people and encourage them to look at electric buses," that should ease his mind. But as you know, as a board, Paul serves as your legislative liaison, and we'll be working with Paul and our legislators to advocate positions on those bills. Also, I'd like to mention, it wouldn't be a budget, excuse, it wouldn't be a board meeting if the superintendent didn't talk about funding, but with the advent of the new administration and new Commissioner of Education, seeing a lot of positive development out of the Department of Ed in Augusta, and we have another example of it, statutory date for distribution of the ED 279 subsidy reports is typically February 1st, we had them January 30th. I've included a copy in your packet, and we'll talk about it a little bit later on the agenda item of budget update, but the figures in that document are based upon the 1.2 billion in GPA funding recommended by the governor in her budget, by a new budget, and includes an additional $37 million that she's requested for education in her supplemental budget. While the figures will not be final until the legislature finally adjourns, the early returns on the document we received are positive for Ellsworth, and we'll talk about that a little bit further. Mrs. Wright mentioned earlier in her report that Kayla Riordan had been nominated as a Hancock County Teacher of the Year. I'm also pleased to report that we have two other teachers in our district who have received similar nominations. Rochelle Brown, grade four teacher at EEMS, receiving the nomination, Hancock County Teacher of the Year, as did a first-year teacher, I'm not sure I recognize this name, Jim Newitt, who's nominated. As Mrs. Wright said about Kayla Riordan, both Mrs. Brown and Mr. Newitt, as you know, do excellent work with our students, and certainly are worthy of the nomination that they received. So it's really nice when you can talk about all the great things that go on with the staff in our schools. And just to close my report, I think we all wondered when it was going to happen. One, retirement, after 46 years at Ellsworth High School, Brian Higgins has decided to retire at the end of this school year. And over those 46 years, he's not only been a physical education teacher, I believe he's also taught health, but he's coached basketball, soccer, tennis, and probably would coach anything else if you asked him to. Certainly, he's touched a lot of lives over the 46 years, and we congratulate him on his retirement and wish him the best in whatever his future may hold. That concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Item H, committee reports.
Drop Out Prevention Committee met on January 17th, meet again on March 5th, I believe. It's, we're just diligently going through all of the needs of the students in We're just diligently going through all of the needs of the students and trying to do our best at trying to meet those needs and help them succeed. So it's been very eventful meetings, getting a lot done, so it's good.
The Personnel Committee has been meeting in collective bargaining sessions with teachers, and that process is going along well. And I'll have a further report later on in the agenda on negotiations between, that we concluded with another association.
Any other? Item I, old business. We have none. Item J, new business, staff-student presentation.
I think Mrs. Lewis has requested handling the introductions here.
I brought presents in the form of gifts tonight. Melissa Doherty and Melissa Mattis are here tonight to talk just for a few minutes about our pre-K program. We are fortunate enough, for spatial reasons, Hancock, the Technical Center, HCTC, moved their pre-K program back to their site, and we are fortunate enough to be able to hold on to at least one of them. So the two Melissas are going to share with you tonight a little bit about what that program is about. We feel really fortunate to have an in-house program that supports incoming kindergartners. And we'll talk a little bit about what they do and how they do it, and like I said, we feel like we are blessed to have this opportunity, so.
Hi, I'm Melissa Mattis. I'm the Director of Early Childhood Programs at Down East Community Partners. Some of you may have known us as Child and Family Opportunities or Washington Hancock Community Agency. We're now Down East Community Partners. I gave you a handout, I'm not going to read the whole thing. Mel D., that's how they tell us apart, is going to talk more about the program, which is a lot more exciting than what I'm talking about, but just had some information about our funding. It's federal grants, state subsidies, and childcare subsidies. We have about 80 full-time staff from Deere Isle to Callis. We have 12 programs right now. We operate Head Start in conjunction with public pre-K, so some of the children in the classroom are eligible for Head Start, some are not. We blend our funding streams and we're able to provide a quality pre-K program. All children benefit from the developmental work that we do, and again, Mel D.'s going to go into great detail about that. The great thing about Head Start is its goal is to get the child ready for school, but it's also geared to get the family ready for school. So we have a variety of wraparound services that help families sort of, if they have goals, if they have things they want to work on, then we have staff to help them do that. We have a team of staff that comes in that helps teachers. We have occupational therapy consultants, we have mental health consultants. We're really looking at the whole family to say, "What can we do?" Everything we can do so when they get to kindergarten, they're ready to learn. And I mean, they're learning anyway, but sort of ready for that school experience. So I'm going to turn it over to Mel D. because she's got a lot of good stuff. If you have any questions in the handout, please let me know.
Hi. Thanks for having us. I'm Melissa Doherty, they call me Mel D. because of Mel M. And it's kind of hard when you're in the same building of who did you talk to? I'm the center coordinator for the program at the Ellsworth Elementary Pre-K, and I love being in the school. I'm also a parent of two children who attend EEMS, and so I'm not only supportive as a parent, but also supportive as somebody who's really excited to run a great program in the school system. Our pre-K program is based on 16 slots of four-year-old students. Some of those are Head Start eligible students, other are pre-K eligible students. We currently attend four mornings a week with four hours a day from September to May. If you don't know much about Head Start, it's a national commitment to give every child, regardless of circumstances at birth, an opportunity to succeed in school and in life. Our Head Start Pre-K program uses high-scope curriculum. This education approach emphasizes active participatory learning, which means students have direct hands-on experience with people, objects, ideas, and events. Children's interests and choices are what drives the curriculum focus. This allows them to construct their own knowledge through interactions with the world and the people around them. The curriculum is individualized for each child based in development, learning styles, interests, and special needs. High-scope curriculum is evidence-based, in other words, we measure growth. We measure growth by teacher observations and what children are actually doing within the classroom. Each individual child has their own observation and our score based on each developmental stage that they're at. The observations that we assess, the whole child interacting in their daily environment, and do not rely on any testing. The domains that are covered are approaches to learning, social and emotional development, physical development and health, language, literacy and communication, mathematics, creative arts, social studies, English language learning if it's applicable, and science and technology. Main early learning guidelines, along with Head Start Learning Outcomes Frameworks, are linked to support curriculum and classroom experience. Child outcomes building towards school readiness are compiled two times a year and are shared with parents during parent-teacher conferences. We also do home visits as well to link how do we engage parents within the classroom and into the school system, and how do we bridge that gap. This provides an opportunity to also look at growth to see where children are developmentally at the end of the year. With this information and collaboration with the pre-K and kindergarten program, teachers are able to support a successful and individualized transition for each child. We also do dial screenings, which are something that the kindergarten program does as well. So if we have children who need services, we can get those in place early on, and we're able to let the kindergarten teachers know these people might need an IEP or what special services that they receive. So it really kind of gets kids ready, school-ready and prepared. Our program also provides breakfast and lunch at no cost to all children. Down East Community Partners pays for meals for any child that is not eligible for free meal status through the program. One of the favorite things that I have about the program is we do what's called family-style eating. Our food comes, breakfast and lunch, comes from the cafeteria served by the cafeteria staff. We use family-style eating, and it's sitting together and eating, and children are knowing and learning many skills. Each, in just this short interaction, children are touching upon numerous high-scope domains, so it also intertwines our curriculum as well. It may look like they're just sitting at a table eating, but they're really learning how to cooperate, practice patience by sharing, passing platters, serving their own food, taking turns in waiting, and using appropriate language and manners. If you can imagine just kind of sitting with a kid all year long who's tried to pour his milk every day and spills it, and he finally does it, it's like, "I did it." The autonomy of four-years-old is pretty exciting to watch. I think it's important to talk about why pre-K. Head Start and early Head Start programs promote children development through services that support early learning, health, and family well-being. As we know, the brain develops faster during early childhood than any other time, especially when a child is engaged in enriching relationships, activities like reading, singing, building, and pretend play. Research has shown that when pre-K programs are well-designed and run by knowledgeable staff, they provide those kind of experiences and give children a solid start at school. Those attending quality pre-K programs, like ours at Ellsworth Elementary School, are linked with a host of benefits as development continues later into years: higher reading and math achievement, lower rates of grade retention, special education placement, and in some cases, stronger social skills and self-control, and even more positive parenting practices later in life. I'd like to share a few testimonials and then a little bit of what a day in a life in the pre-K classroom is. And some of the testimonials are just from a few of our parents that have come, and then I'll stop taking all of your time. This was written today by our assistant preschool teacher, pre-K teacher, and she says, "I'm writing to you today to give you a glimpse into the daily happenings of pre-K at Ellsworth Elementary School. Our days are filled with giggles, dancing, singing, exploring, and a lot of learning. My day starts by preparing the classroom just like any other teacher in this building does. Tables are bleached, my coworker and I check the classroom to make sure it is safe, and we open the doors for the 11 little ones that are currently enrolled. Their day starts by exploring the materials that have been placed on the tables. Today was photos of German landmarks, maps of Germany, and more familiar maps and landmarks that are found here in Maine. There are also blocks available in case they want to recreate any of the landmarks, and paper and writing materials for them to make their own maps. We move on to morning meeting where we discuss our day and what we're learning. The mother of one of the little boys in our class is from Germany, so we've decided to learn about that country and other countries that are important to the families we have in our class right now. That's one of my favorite things about pre-K. We learn about what is relevant to the children and what they are excited about. While at morning meeting, Mrs. Stacy from the cafeteria brings our breakfast, and the kids are always so excited to see her. We eat together a family-style meal, and the kids make a plan for after-breakfast. Work time follows breakfast, which is where the children implement the plan they come up with for the day. Oftentimes, they want to make a craft, build with blocks, or put on a puppet show. This is the time for them to choose what they want to do, what they want to work on and learn. My co-teacher and I move around the classroom, teaching skills to solve problems that arise during play and helping children to build upon their plans so they are challenged. The next part of our day goes by quickly. We play outside any day that it is safe to, we read stories and sing songs, and then we move on to small group. Small group is when we come together at the tables for a teacher-led activity. Today, we took a look at the German flag and worked on patterns using the colors of it. Each child was working on something different during this activity. Some were working on their fine motor skills by putting the small blocks together. Some were working on extending patterns and were challenged to make their own unique pattern. And some were working on color identification. We meet each child where they are in pre-K. Small group wraps up, lunch comes in, and we have another healthy family-style meal at the tables together. The children have mastered asking for things to be passed to them from across the table and serving themselves. As they finish up eating, they brush their teeth and move on to the final part of their day, which is large group. This is the time where we burn off some energy. Occasionally, we can use the elementary gym to play games during this time, but usually we are using the parachute or going a scavenger hunt in our room. Instruments, dancing, and obstacle courses are all popular activities for this part of our day. After this time has come to saying goodbye, many of my students come in already knowing this song because they have had older siblings in my class and have joined in singing when they are here, when they're younger, to pick up their siblings. All of the classroom children leave at 12, and my co-teacher and I get busy cleaning the classroom, documenting the daily observations we took on each child's progress, attending Child Development Service meetings to better help children in the classroom who receive their services, working with our families to set and meet goals, so many other things that we love doing as Head Start teachers. I hope that this long, somewhat rambling letter gives you an idea of what our classroom is like. I would love to have you guys come and visit sometime. We always love having visitors join us to read us a story, to have a meal with us, or to teach us something new. We would love to show you our classroom and teach you more about our program. Thank you for your time and support. Allison Preston. I just want to share two more family letters that we received as well from parents whose children attended our pre-K program last year and who also have children waiting in the wings to come next year and the year after. This is from Katie Stratton. She said, "My son was in pre-K last year in the classroom at Ellsworth Elementary, and I'm hoping to have my daughter join next fall. The main reason I wanted them to join pre-K and not a different daycare was because of the fact that they have a classroom within the school that they will attend for the next eight years. Having pre-K in the school is such a great way to slowly introduce the kids to what going to school is all about. My son was so comfortable starting kindergarten this year because he knew the school and had seen his current teacher so many times last year. He already knew all of the other teachers' names and had a sense of what to expect before even starting kindergarten. I know he would not have been nearly as comfortable about starting school if it wasn't for the pre-K class last year, being able to break him in slowly, so to speak. It is an excellent program, and I hope to have my daughter attend at the school next year." She says, "Thank you." This other one is from Molly Delena. She says she is writing to share her support for our pre-K program at the Ellsworth Elementary School. Her daughter Viviana was in pre-K class for the 2018-2019 school year. This year, she is in kindergarten at EEMS. As a former teacher myself, the pre-K program was exactly what I was hoping for when looking for a school for Viviana. The combination of play-based and child-led activities allowed Vivvy to have the support she needed, whether it was socially, academically, or physically. Her teachers helped her from friendships with other kids, which was a struggle with her shyness, allowed her focus on writing when she became interested, even if none of the other kids were interested, and gave her physical outlet that she needed as a four-year-old child. She came home thrilled to tell me about the science experiments they had done that day, or the country they had learned about, or the book they had read, or the art project that they had made. Having the program right in the school was amazing and made her transition to kindergarten this year incredibly smooth. She had already spent a year at EEMS, so she wasn't nervous about going. She felt completely comfortable down in the kindergarten wing. She had met the specialist teacher and was familiar with the cafeteria and the types of food to expect, which is a big deal, actually. Food's always a big deal for the kids. She had experience with fire drills and walking in line. The teachers were also incredibly supportive of the families and their students and helped parents navigate any challenges they faced that they were particular to their own individual child. I am certain that helped all of the kids have the best possible start to formal schooling. We couldn't have asked for a better experience for her and hope that the program continues to be a part of the EEMS future. We have two more children that we hope to send to pre-K in time. So I thank you guys for having us in the program, and we feel very lucky to be a part of you guys, so. Any questions?
Thank you for a wonderful presentation.
Thank you. I had five hours to put it together, Mr. Higgins.
How many kids do you have in the?
So our program is slotted for 16 kids. We currently have 11 children in attendance. Thank you for asking, because we do have open enrollment all year long. We accept kids throughout the school year. We also are taking applications for the fall of 2021 as well. And parents can find information on the school website. There's also an application now on the school website, or to call Down East Community Partners' Enrollment Office, I'm going to plug that number, (207) 610-5187. Or they can stop into the office and talk with Sherri, or they'll give them my information. I'm in the school almost every day, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
May I follow up on Rob's question and Mrs. Doherty's answer? Actually, we did meet today, met with Mrs. Doherty, Mrs. Madison, Mrs. Lewis. And first of all, first, the program and the collaboration is wonderful, and it's a great opportunity for students to get acclimated and families to get acclimated to our school. But one of the things that we talked about today, you know, Rob, your question was how many students? The agreement has a cap of 16, although we did agree to increase it to 18 last year. One of the things we talked about this morning was problem-solving on, are there ways that we can increase that enrollment to get to the cap of 18? And who knows after that? And I think as our process moves forward this spring, we'll have that conversation with Board Finance Committee. But I think it's very much appreciated that both Mrs. Madison, Mrs. Doherty came in this evening to present. We did ask them this afternoon if they were willing to come in tonight, and they were able to put it together, so we do appreciate that.
Of course.
Appreciate the information, and I'm sure our board does as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, do you want to? Kathy, anything you want to add?
As I said before, I think we're designing a program that enables our kids to transition from one to another seamlessly. And we've worked very closely, Lewis and I have the opportunity, Melissa B. and I have also, but to collaborate more closely this year, to get things on our website, our school website, so it's more inclusive, and that's just helpful for all the kids and their families, so it's been great. And you can see how passionate they are. Anybody can prepare for weeks to do a presentation, but when you only have five hours, you have to be really passionate about getting together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
J2, discussion and consideration of overnight trips. Hancock County Technical Center Mel Mac Overnight Trip.
So we received the itinerary and agenda. With our Mel Mac grant, we have funding available. Part of it is to have students be exposed to post-secondary opportunities. We've done several different trips, but we've never done a Northern Maine trip for our students. And UMaine Presque Isle and University of Maine at Fort Kent have programming that clearly aligns with our school and some of our programs. So we've put together an itinerary for April 8th and April 9th, where students would leave HCTC Wednesday morning and arrive back on Thursday, April 9th. So they would miss two days of school. They would have tours of both campuses, and University of Maine at Presque Isle has graciously offered to host us that evening for events and dinner, which I think we are taking them up on. We would ask students to put a $20 deposit down, which we would then give back to them, and our expectation would be that they would be in academic good standing, not only with us, but also with their high school, to receive their high school permission to attend us, but also with their high school, to receive their high school permission to attend this trip. Currently, we have 45 students who have expressed an interest in attending this trip, and so we would have four staff members, both male and female, attending this for supervision. And so this would be at no expense to students other than the deposit that they would receive back. MELMAC will pay for everything for the entire trip for these kids.
I move that we approve the Hancock County Technical Center Overnight MELMAC Trip to the University of Maine at Fort Kent and University, University of Maine at Presque Isle as presented.
A second motion?
Discussion? My only comment is that, would you please remind them there's still snow in the county in the beginning of April?
That's another snow reference.
I will.
I'm so sorry.
You've been talking to Mrs. Lewis. Sorry.
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Thank you. Skills next?
Yes.
Okay. So I apologize. The original agendas you got had like four dates on them. So Mrs. Austin did update your packets today. Skills is March 19th and March 18th, March 19th and March 20th, and one of your sheets had said March 7th, which was last year's dates. The agenda is the same as it is every year for Skills. The one change this year, which I am actually very appreciative for, is that we don't have to go do afternoon testing like we typically do, so kids don't have to leave Thursday early. We can leave towards the end of the school day on Thursday. So we're working with each high school to try to make it so kids don't miss as much school time on Thursday, which is a nice change. They're actually, have already opened the online portal for their online testing, and they're doing that earlier to have that out of the way for students. But everything is the same for us. We'll leave Thursday afternoon, check into the hotel, get their room assignments out. Very graciously, last year, we began a partnership with Eastern Maine Community College. We take the most kids in the state to this, and to find a place to feed 69 kids and all of my staff is a challenge. And last year, Eastern Maine Community College took us in and fed us, so that's, we will be doing that again this year. Then we will head over for opening ceremonies. This year, we are staying at the Fairfield Inn instead of the Ramada Inn, which I'm thrilled about, a little bit nicer, and they have been wonderfully accommodating for us, giving us the amount of rooms that we need for only $86 a night, which is a wonderful deal. So we're very appreciative of that. We spend the night in the hotel. There will be seven of us that will spend the night at the hotel. The rest of my staff will drive back and forth so that kids are adequately supervised. And then we get up and going at 5:30, and off we go at 6:15 for our first rounds of competition on Friday, March 20th. This year, we'll be even more of a logistical mapping for us because of the middle school students who will be spread out as well. Most of their competitions will be at Hampden Academy and are mixed with some of ours. The Cross Center negotiations with them fell through. They wanted a lot of money, so we have moved, so that is an update on this, we've moved, opening and closing is going to be at Hampden Academy this year, as well as some of the competition sites will be on the first floor at Hampden Academy. So you have the agenda for that, and we've also included the list of students. As it gets closer, I will try to email out to you where specific competitions are, because I know some of you try to attend that day, so that you know which competitions are closed, which are open, and which you can see and which you cannot. But the kids' competitions are spread out across three to four sites. They're at UTC, Eastern Maine Community College, Jobport, and Hampden Academy. So we're everywhere that day.
Make a motion to approve Hancock County Technical Center Overnight Trip to Skills USA Main Competition as presented.
Second? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Ellsworth High School Overnight Trip to Camp Kiev for Rainbow Ball 2020.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Carrie Cutney, and I'm a Spanish teacher and gifted and talented at EHS. I also happen to be the advisor of the GSDA, which is the Gender Sexuality Diversity Alliance. And there is a weekend field trip called the Rainbow Ball. In May, it's from May 1st until May 3rd, a Friday until Sunday, that basically is a pride celebration. The Rainbow Ball was started in the 1990s by UMaine when there was, and I, I'm not sure that this actually happened in Maine, but there was a historic case where a gay couple wanted to attend a prom, and they were told they couldn't go. So the Rainbow Ball became a prom for students in the LGBTQ community. So UMaine hosted it, and ever, you know, for the past 25 years, it's been an event that has taken place. It has sort of morphed into a week-and-long pride celebration with workshops, and it does include, you know, a Saturday night dance for the students to go to. So EHS and the GSDA students would like to attend, and they would like to have this be something that is fully supported by the Ellsworth School District in support of, you know, the LGBTQ community. So I would like to take the students. The workshops include a very wide range of things at Camp Kiev, and they use the entire facility. They have a ropes course, they have a poetry writing workshop, they have an LGBTQ history workshop. There's quite a list, and I do have a packet here that gives all the details and the schedule of events. But there's a lot of reasons why, I think this is really important. One of the main reasons why is with Mitchell's Challenge, we've been talking so much about, you know, bullying and being nice to each other, that I think it's really important to look at the data, and there's a lot of data to suggest that the kids who are mistreated and bullied the most are kids in the LGBTQ community. And so their rates of homelessness, depression, suicidality, self-harm are significantly statistically higher in that community than, say, the general population. So I have some stats to present to you, so let's start with just bullying. That 8% of all students in the state of Maine in public high schools reported that they were bullied, while students who were in the LGBTQ, LGBTQ community reported that at 33%. So if we sort of think about, you know, trying to solve this problem, thinking about who the problem is affecting the most is a really good place to start. So, so showing support to this community is a really good step in the right direction. A big part of the Rainbow Ball weekend is reducing isolation and getting kids of that community together to meet each other from different schools and to develop networks for lots of reasons, but support is, is a really big part of it. So I would like to take them. We would leave Monday, I'm sorry, Friday after school, so about 3 o'clock, May 1st, and we, the return date is Sunday, May 3rd, at about 11:00 a.m. And a male chaperone has offered to come along if need be. I, I really don't know how many kids will sign up for this, but I think that, you know, we can accommodate that for sure. The cost, the total cost of the program is $25. This is put on by OutMaine. UMaine no longer does the weekend. OutMaine is a nonprofit organization to support the LGBTQ community in the state of Maine. There's a $25 fee. They're pretty good about waiving it for any kid who can't afford it. We would have to pay for busing costs, but we probably wouldn't because MDI High School has offered generously to pick us up on their way. So, so free transportation's not a terrible thing. But anyway, I think it's a really great program. I'm really excited about it. They have professional development for the teacher chaperones the entire weekend, so I'm really looking forward to that. I think that would really improve my technique at the high school. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. So the age group?
Mm-hmm.
This is all focused for high school students?
Yes, this is a high school program.
So not college level at all?
No.
Like it was set on by UMaine? There's not college students there? It's just high school students?
They have, so the way they, the, the students stay in cabins, and there is an adult counselor. The definition of adult counselor is someone who's age 24 and over. And then there are the one-to-two junior counselors that are also in the cabin, and they are between the ages of 19 and 24. So there might be college students there, but they would not be participants.
But they're in a counselor.
They would be in a counselor role. Yeah. So all of the students participating are high school students.
Should we make a motion?
Sure.
Let's make a motion to approve the overnight out-of-state. Sorry.
I think it's in-state.
It's in-state.
Yeah.
Prove the overnight trip to Camp Kiev for the Rainbow Ball 2020 as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have something. Just kind of, I appreciate, and I know it's in the paperwork about the MDI offering and maybe Sumner offering as well with the transportation. I, I think with board approval, if for some reason that doesn't work out, to me, it's a group in our school, we should support that. If transportation is needed, transportation should be part of it.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for presenting.
Consideration and approval of program change at HCTC.
You're up again.
We haven't seen you yet tonight. Don't get your cup full.
I'm keeping my mind off that. Then we just started, because the boys went to overtime.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, did they?
April just texted and said, "We're just starting warm-ups. Maybe you'll make it."
I got it.
I said, "I don't, I don't want that."
I hope this, I don't want my shorts on.
I probably could just.
And a further update, the, the, the boys JV team did win.
Sweet. Thank you.
Want to hand those out to you?
Yeah, that's my.
Just tuck that a little bit.
I have one.
If you didn't get the diesel one, this is the diesel.
It's the diesel.
So over the last, I'd say, 18 months, something that we've been doing is we've increased the collaboration with high school principals at our school. I've been meeting monthly with high school principals this year, and last year, we met four times. One of the things that we're talking about is how to offer further opportunities for students in different pathways. And one of the things that we've talked a lot about is the need for some kids to be able to feel like they can come for only one year. Some programs do not lend themselves well to that, others do. So staff has worked on for a while now, trying to look at their curriculum, and are there ways that we could offer two-one-year programs as standalones, or students could take both and still get the comprehensive two-year program? So what you have before you tonight is the first two programs that are, we're hoping to present would be like this. So for example, early childhood education, the curriculum is exactly the same. There are no curriculum changes at all. We are still meeting all state industry standard guidelines. We are still meeting all of our required hours in both the classroom and for clinical hours for students. But what we've done is we've broken down the programs into two concrete sessions. And part of that was because and based on feedback from our program advisory committee for the early childhood program. One of the things that businesses in our area and childcare centers were saying is that we were not providing enough opportunities for students to get their clinical hours in an infant-toddler setting. We did a ton with three- and four-year-olds, and we did a ton with elementary education, but we were not providing enough opportunities for infant-toddler. The problem is, the infant-toddler curriculum is an easy fit in the afternoon, and babies at daycare's nap. That's their nap time. And so to have students go to clinical hours in a nap setting, not, not really conducive to learning the early learning standards and getting the hands-on skills and experiences they need. So what was offered to us as an idea that they voted on and approved was us offering infant-toddler mommy-and-me or parent-and-me, grandparent-and-me play sessions in the afternoon next year. So Caterpillar Clubhouse would continue to be offered in the morning, which is when we typically are most full for preschool. And then in the afternoon, on those three days, we typically offer preschool, we will offer the light classes, where people can come in and have monitored, structured playtime with our students, and that would be their clinical hours, which we're actually really excited about. So what you see before you is the new description for the two-one-year programs, and we outlined for you the differences in certifications. Students can still get everything they get currently, and what we're going to be really careful to talk to kids about is, if you want the CECA certification, which licenses you to be an early childhood assistant in a preschool or daycare setting, by this date, you need to come to both years. You will not get it if you attend only one year, and so we're trying to make that really clear to students. The curriculum itself, though, there are no changes. We didn't make any changes. The only change is the description and us saying, "If you want to try, if you think you might be interested in early childhood, pick where you think your passion is and try that first, and if you like it, great, then you can do the second one. And if not, then, great, you've tried it in high school when it hasn't cost you money at the post-secondary level, and go take a different experience or different classes at your high school." So we're trying to offer more of those types of opportunities for kids, and this would be the first. And then diesel technology, same thing. No curriculum changes. We have to follow NATF standards and guidelines. The hours are the same. What he's done is he's broken it up into two portions, fundamentals of service in the morning, fundamentals of diagnostic repair in the afternoon. Every year, we have some kids that come in the morning whose family owns a business, and they've been tinkering on diesel engines their whole lives, and they really are better placed in the afternoon. This gives us a little more flexibility to be able to move students around and do that. Again, if they have a scheduling conflict at some of our smaller high schools, sometimes classes are only offered one part of the day at a small high school. And if they really want that class or they need that class, this gives kids flexibility to do that. So these would be the two programs right now that we would put forth, that we would like to change the names of. It still would be an early childhood program and a diesel technology program, but we would have individual titles for the two-one-year sessions, giving kids more flexibility and options. Again, this can't be done in every program. Some programs are so prescriptive of what we have to do, and they have to be two years. But in these two instances, we thought it was a, an easy switch because there's no curriculum changes, no equipment needs, none of that. This is a very seamless transition for us. We'll try it next year, and if we can offer it in more places in different programs, we will, after we see how this goes.
I only see one motion here. Are we missing one?
I would say you could amend that motion to include, if you want to take them together, you could include the
Diesel.
Diesel technology program in that same motion.
Yes.
And that would accomplish the intent of the motion.
So I move that we approve the early childhood education programs change of content and offering of infant-toddler playgroup as presented, as well as to approve the diesel program change of content as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Second read and approval of the 2020-2021 School Department Calendar.
Doesn't seem possible. Just as we start out, for those of you who are students of school calendars in the Ellsworth School Department, this, this calendar that's being proposed tonight is virtually identical to the 2015-16 school calendar. Biggest difference is what we're proposing around the Thanksgiving holiday. Start days are the same as back in 2015-16, and the closing days, pending storm days, I know I had to say that, are the same. But just, just to recount the process, I provided you with two drafts this evening for your consideration, and I'll talk a little bit about why there are two drafts. One, every year what we do is we come up with a draft calendar, we put it out, and we seek input from our staff members. Typically, that's done to the principals, where they will post it for their staff members and gather feedback and send it back. This year, we tried something different. We posted it in a survey out through the Google Schools and got a great deal of feedback, which I shared with the board at your last workshop. And, and as you saw, we got a lot of really good feedback. Some of the primary pieces that we receive, and we've received these over the past several years, are historically, and I'll look, we have some, we have some folks here in the audience, how long have you been doing the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving Week as in-service days? At least as long as we've withdrawn from the RSU?
I was starting the RSU.
You started during the RSU years?
Oh, no, it was before the
It was before that, okay. Every, every year?
I think it was before that.
Okay, so it's, it's been a long time regardless, right? Okay, so it's, it's been a long time regardless, right? Okay. Every year, we receive feedback, you know, 50/50, let's keep it this way, let's change it. This year, there, there was a, a little more feedback towards trying it a little bit differently, taking the days from Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, having those be student days and moving the two in-service days to different places. The other feedback that we received, and this is why I mentioned that we did this back in 2015-16, is around the start of the year. There's been a perception that Elsworth has never started with student days prior to Labor Day. Actually, we did that in 2015-16. The other piece that was mentioned as a concern, when I referenced 2015-16, is we typically start the teacher year the last week in August. Back in 2015-16, the Sunday and Monday, the 30th and 31st, are a partial week in August. The last full week in August is the week of the 24th through the 28th. So what this calendar has, let me go back a step. Starting before Labor Day was one piece. Having the teacher week start the last full week in August is another piece, which you did in 2015-16. That week would start with a new teacher orientation on the 25th, which is a Tuesday, the two in-service days on Wednesday, Thursday of that week, which is the 26th and 27th. The first student day would be on August 31st, that's grades K through nine. First day for everybody would be September 1. There was a lot of feedback this year around what we do with that holiday weekend. Historically, at least for the past five or six years, we've not had student days the Friday before Labor Day. We've kind of given a long weekend that may be an ode to the Blue Hill Fair and we've had that conversation around our table. In looking at that, we had a lot of feedback that says we'd rather have a full week that week, rather than a three-day week, a four-day week, and then a full week. It's better for kids, better for teachers. So the calendar draft reflects a full week in the first week in September. With regard to the professional development days in November, the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving, we're proposing to take one of those days and make it October 9th, which is a Friday. Also coincides with the other districts in Hancock County are doing with one of their days. It happens to be Veterans Day weekend, so there would be a long weekend there. We're proposing to take the other day from Thanksgiving week and place it at the end of the school year following the last student day. Those are the major changes in this calendar. I mentioned that there are two versions. One version, option one, is the one I'm recommending, which is the start date for students of August 31st. There is a second version where we don't have students on August 31st and instead have students on September 1 and September 2, their first days. There may be some that think it's really odd to start with kids in August when we haven't done it in a long time. From my perspective, I think it would be beneficial for us to start with the first day on the 31st. We have built in on that particular version, four storm days. And again, as you know, that's semantics, but there were four, four storm days built in. It would have your last student day with four storm days be June 17th, your last teacher day would be June 18th. So, there is a presentation, there is a recommendation. I guess the last piece I would say, one of the other things that we're constrained by is having to make sure that we have consistency with other calendars around Hancock County. The week of Thanksgiving is one constraint, but historically, we've had one district that did not do professional development days that week, so those were dissimilar days anyway. This year, we actually have two other districts who are not doing them, if you include us. It, it will not make a difference. We will still meet the maximum of five dissimilar days with this proposal. So, with that being said.
Make a motion to approve the second read and adopt the 2020-2021 Elsworth School Department Calendar as presented.
Option one, Mr. Hudson?
Option one.
Option one.
Okay.
Do I have a second? I'll say that. Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, just to be clear, option one is the one that you just recommended starts on August 31st.
The first student day would be August 31st, which is a Monday. That's for grades K through nine and all students would start on September 1.
I, I can accept either one of these. It doesn't bother me. Other than having been an elementary school teacher of young ones, to come for five days straight the first week by Friday, it's a long week. And recognizing that, that they will be out at 1:30 on Friday, it's still, to me, makes sense to do the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and not start on that first Monday. But I can accept whatever anyone agrees with.
I know, we can discuss that. Because it gives two short weeks.
It do get a nice, nice, long, three-day weekend.
But I, I think a clarification in there, what, what we've done in past years, what we did back in 15-16, we did start on the 1st and we did not have students in on that Friday. So it was a three-day week, a four-day week, a five-day week. And I think that's what some of the feedback was, we don't like the three, four, five. With what Mrs. Thomas is saying, four and four may be fine. And again, the, the only change between option one and two, if you did go with that one, would be we would build in three storm days instead of four. Your last days of the year would be scheduled the same.
Right.
So I think right now you have a motion and a second.
Right.
And you're in the midst of discussion. And ju- just procedurally, if, if the board wants to continue that conversation and look at option two, I would talk to you about the mechanism through Robert's Rules of Orders of how you could.
No, it's, it's fine. I just want to go on record saying that, that I recognize that it's a long week. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
And we will make sure that we post this soon because certainly Thanksgiving week will represent a change for staff and for our families.
Item five, discussion and consideration of administrator contracts.
Yes, as you know, every year, this time of year, in the midst of budget process, we do make recommendations for administrator contracts. And I'll refer back to the beginning of the meeting when we were talking about staff members who were nominated as Hancock County Teacher of the Year. It was an opportunity to talk about the great staff that we have in the Elsworth School Department. As we've talked about around this table, we comment on that on a regular basis. That's not just limited to our teachers, to our red techs, to our bus drivers, to our food service, to our custodians. That also goes to your administrators. And not just your administrators who do public presentations here, but all of your full-time administrators. The list of recommendations that have been presented in your packet are based upon my ongoing assessment and evaluation of their performance against standards and expectations. In most cases, I am the direct supervisor for these people. In some cases, there is a layer in between me. For example, you have a couple of assistant director and assistant principal positions in there. They have a, a direct supervisor who does their assessment and evaluation. But my assessment is based upon my work with those people, my conversations with the direct superior and my evaluation of their performance. So, based upon that, what I can tell you is our administrators across the board are doing an outstanding job in meeting and exceeding standards. And as we know, with any evaluative process, it's the rare exception when everybody meets or exceeds every single standard. And when you look at the list of administrators that we have, are there things that could work and need improvement? Absolutely. But the way that we work, there are good conversations that go on. Our administrators know where their strengths are, where their challenges are, where their goals are. So, from my perspective, I'm recommending that there's a 3% increase in salary and extension of their contract by one year. And in anticipation of the question, when you say extend the contract by one year, our administrators typically work on two-year rolling contracts in Elsworth. So when we extend it by one year, what that will mean is when we issue a new contract that starts on July 1st, it will be for a two-year period. That's a show of support for our administrators, but also in the event that you have someone who is in need of significant improvement, that gives them a period of time in which they can address any deficiencies that they have.
I move, I move that we approve the administrator contracts in accord with the terms and conditions of employment as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All the, no? Okay. Okay. Item six, budget update.
Budget update, and I promise this will be a quick and efficient budget update for you. In your, in your packets online, you received a copy of the ED 279 subsidy report and I think we covered page one of that in a recent workshop. But just a quick overview of, of that document and where we are with regard to budget. As I mentioned in my report, Governor Mills in her supplemental budget proposal has added $37 million for pre-K education to support education in Maine. And our understanding is that the increase in funding is intended to accomplish a couple of things. Address some laws that were put into place by the first session of the legislature, but also to increase the state share of public education towards 55%. Her supplemental budget proposal would take, if it's approved, the state's contribution from 50.78% to 51.78%. It is a step closer. With regard to the document and regard to how Elsworth performs on this particular version of it, first piece is, if you look in section four of your document, the mill rate expectation. And what the mill rate expectation is, is the amount of money that the city of Elsworth needs to raise locally in order to receive the full level of state subsidy. Last year, and again, this, this mill rate is applied against the three-year average evaluation for the city of Elsworth. Last year, the rate was 8.28 mils. Because of the governor's increase in funding, and that may be an update, increase in funding, what the mill rate would be this year was 8.18 mils. And that's on the Elsworth three-year valuation of just over $1 billion. It would require that we raise $8,681,706.66, which is a reduction of just about $7,800 from last year. So that, that is a positive move. It's less money that we have to raise. Subsidy, and what subsidy is with regard to this document, if you look at section 5C, it gives you a total amount of money and we determine subsidy for K through 12, the academic portion of funding. You subtract from the total amount received in section 5C, what you'd receive for career and technical education and what you'd receive for debt service reimbursement. That would determine your school subsidy. We are slated to receive on this document $4,169,503.88, which is an increase of $137,036.86 over last year. Career and technical education, we're also seeing an increase there. That's section 5B. Now, it's important to note that of the two new, potential new programs that you as a board have approved and that Mrs. Bowles is including in her recruiting trips, the hospitality and tourism and the cybersecurity, there is funding included in the model to support those programs to the tune of $143,000. So what we would see right now for an allocation for CTE is $1,728,430.29, which is an increase of $231,371 over last year's allocation. Again, so that not only supports new programs, that also is an increase. And again, these subsidy figures are based upon primarily what your valuation is and what your student enrollment counts are. So typically, the, the best combination for you is your valuation either stays static or reduces and your enrollment goes up. Our enrollment is projected to continue to go up, so we're seeing that in this document. Now, one place I want to be clear on how I talk about this, we also receive money with regard to debt service reimbursement. Now, I'll say it right off the bat, we're seeing a reduction in debt service reimbursement in almost $169,000. But the important thing to understand is what we're also seeing is a corresponding decrease in the amount of money we're spending on debt service because the amount of interest goes down each year. So, even though we're receiving $168,668 less, that's corresponding on the expenditure side. So if you set that piece aside, what we're seeing is a projected increase of almost $370,000 to support CTE and academic programming. So that's, that's a, that's a positive bump and it's a positive piece to add to our budget process. Went through that pretty quickly. Any, any questions on that? Again, it is also important to know for you as a board and for our community, these are preliminary numbers, they come out January 30th, the legislature is still in session. $37 million of that is included in the governor's supplemental budget. What happens between now and April 15th, we, we certainly don't know.
Thank you. Item seven, consideration of ratification of agreement between the Elsworth School Board and the Elsworth Educational Healthcare and Office Professional Association.
Yeah, so, Mr. Hudson and myself concluded, along with Mr. Higgins, we concluded negotiations with the Elsworth Educational Healthcare and Office Professionals Association for a new three-year contract. And we, that was ratified by the association and now we're asking the board to ratify it.
And, and we reviewed on the changes at your last workshop. We did provide you with a copy that had some very minor changes. A word that was forgotten, a paragraph that was forgotten. Those were highlighted in the packet that was sent to you. We do have an executive session opportunity on here if anybody needs to go into that. And if not, certainly, I think Mrs. Thomas would entertain a motion.
I would entertain a motion.
Are we allowed to make it, the motion since we were on?
Yeah, I see, why not?
We are. Let's see, make a motion for consideration ratification of the agreement between Elsworth School Board and Elsworth Educational Healthcare and Office Professionals Association. Three-year contract.
A second. Discussion?
May, may I compliment our negotiating team on, on a job well done? And also, credit goes to the members of, and I'm going to use the acronym E-HOP. It's much easier to say than, than what the two of you had to say. But I think the process was very positive. I thought it went very well and a lot of credit goes to both parties, but in particular, Mr. Markoza and Mr. Hudson for the great work that they did.
Yeah, and I'd like to extend credit also to the members of E-HOP who came to the table and it's great to see in these collective bargaining process to see that both sides recognize that we have a lot of common interests and there's a lot of trust. And that goes a long way to helping us get to these agreements as constructively as we were able to do.
I agree.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calendar announcements. The Elsworth School Board Workshop will be on Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, in the Elsworth School Department Conference Room at 6 o'clock. The Elsworth School Board Meeting will be Tuesday, March 10th, 2020, City Hall Council Chambers at 6:30. Item L is adjourned.
Having no further business, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
7:58.
Okay.